So we'll see. I'm going to put up my poll.
Good morning. It's Tuesday, April 2nd, 9:30 a.m. If you'd all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. All right, and we've got minutes.
I move to approve the minutes of the March 26 meeting.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion?
I'm going to abstain from voting. I wasn't at that meeting, so I will abstain from the voting process.
Okay. Noting that, roll call, please.
Harrison.
Abstain.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes. All right. Open up public comment regarding any of our resolutions. All right, we'll go forward. County Engineers' Office, we have Gina Frimwell with us today. Good morning.
Good morning. We have one resolution, finding that public convenience and welfare requires the reapplication of pavement markings on various township roadways in Medina County and authorizing the Medina County engineer to improve said roadways. And we have the weekly permit list.
All right. Move to approve.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes. Very good. Thanks, Gina. See, that was easy, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Jeremy Sinko, our sanitary engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
One resolution for consideration today, and that's declaring the necessity to replace existing sanitary sewers and water mains along Second Street in Lafayette Township and authorizing the sanitary engineer to commence with advertising for construction bids.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Nicole Lee, our human resources assistant. Good morning.
Good morning. I have two resolutions for you today. The first is approving personnel changes. We have two new hires, one in sanitary, one at the office for older adults, four rate increases, three at JFS, one in IT, one promotion at JFS, one leave of absence and maintenance, two resignations at JFS, one at JFS, one in sanitary. My second resolution is amending the tables of organization for Medina County IT and job and family services.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Nicole. Brett Thomas, our finance director.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. How are you doing today?
Good.
I have seven resolutions for your consideration today. We're going to start right off with some grants. The first one is for solid waste, the EPA grant for source reduction. Our second resolution is another EPA grant for solid waste for the community and litter grant. Our third resolution is a grant for the sheriff's office, OCJS Interview and Interrogation Room Technology Grant. Our fourth resolution is transfer of inventory between different offices. Our fifth and very long resolution here is excess property resolution. Our sixth resolution is expenses of county officials. We do have one out of state for veteran services going to Denver, Colorado for the National Association of Veteran Services Officers National Conference. And our seventh and final resolution is our weekly bills in the amount of $1,160,244.53.
Move to approve the seven resolutions?
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes. All right. Thank you, Brett. Chris Jacob, county administrator, just in time.
Sure. Good morning.
Good morning.
First resolution this morning authorizes a program for donation of county surplus property to eligible nonprofit corporations. The second resolution authorizes the donation of certain surplus property to the habitat for humanity of Medina County. This is some of the items that had been left at the courthouse complex and that they are now utilizing for their program purposes. Next resolution authorizes an agreement with Jared Dickey for master plans examination services for the Medina County Building Department. This is a renewal agreement for a two-year period commencing March 22 of this year. It says 2204 should be 2024 at the rate of $70 per hour. And next and final resolution approves the purchase of replacement transit vehicles utilizing the Ohio Department of Transportation's Cooperative Purchasing Program. This is for the purchase of eight replacement vehicles. Estimated total cost is $814,192.
Move to approve the four resolutions.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? I'll just point out the surplus property given to Habitat for Humanity. I believe most of it's available at the restore.
Correct.
I've seen some of the postings and social media, some nice furniture over there.
Correct.
So, all right. Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. Department updates. Denise Testa, would you mind coming forward? I think we have a couple of resolutions for you here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I just have a couple of resolutions. The first is reauthorizing the request for quotes for the Village of Lodi Richmond Field Project funded through the PY-22 CDBG program. And the second is authorizing a change order, number one, to the agreement with D2 Excavating for the program year 2022, Critical Infrastructure Bridge in Lodi.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion?
Just curious, do we have a deadline on the spend for that program year 22 funds?
Yes, it is in August. At the end of August, all the work needs to be completed, and funds spent down by September, grant closeout in October.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes.
Okay. So the May Planning Commission, we received one text amendment, so that is from Montville Township will be on our agenda for May, a potential subdivision from Sharon Township that has been deferred for the last few months. So we will move forward with the May Planning Commission meeting. Lodi Bridge, as you saw in the change order, the bridge is planned to be delivered mid-April, so it will be installed probably between the mid-April and early May. So we're very excited to see that move forward. The Brunswick Street repaving, so we're now in PY-22 CDBG, the Brunswick Street repaving is, that contract is ready to go. We'll be advertising for bids for that soon. We are continuing with the Lodi pathway as well to reauthorize with bid, and the Montville pathway is also, will be underway here soon. Just a reminder, the deadline for PY-24 Community Development Block Grant is May 3. So for those that are submitting applications, keep that in mind. We also, our Fair Housing Awareness Day, we will, we are hosting that on Friday, April 19, from 9:00 to 11:30 at the Medina County Board of Developmental Disabilities. They have donated their space to us. The Subdivision Regulations Work Group, as I mentioned to Steve earlier, that is relaunching this month on April 26. And in addition, thanks to Chris Jacobs, we are participating in a prevailing wage training later this month with several departments. Are there any questions?
No.
Oh, well, that's good.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Next, Laura Toth, Office for Older Adults.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have some updates for you. Last Wednesday was our Brunswick Senior Expo. That was at the Brunswick Recreation Center from 9:30 to 12:00. It went very well. We had over 300 participants, and it's over 60 vendor tables. And our disco theme was a hit. We had some great costumes. I think Brian, lots of glitz and glam. I think Brian Galton has some good pictures for the newsletter. Our next large-scale agency event will be Medina County Senior Day. It's our largest event of the year. We expect well over 600 seniors and about 100 vendors. That takes place on Wednesday, May 22, and that'll be at the fairgrounds, so more to come on that. The month of May is always Older Americans Month, and we will celebrate that as well. Friday, April 19, is the Medina County Senior and Adult Foundation's Giving and Style Fashion Show. It's our third annual event. Tickets are still available by contacting our office or visiting MCSAF.org. The foundation strives to support the programs of Office for Older Adults, including the purchase of meals for Senior Day. That expense is well over $5,000, and the foundation buys those meals. We serve a box lunch every year, so people can now come for free. So before the foundation was in existence, people would pay $5 to come to see the exhibits and stuff, and now we can offer that for free, which is, it's just great. That's how it should be. So it's a really good example of us working together. Another largely supported program is our congregate meals at the Medina Center. Certainly not grant-funded meals, but other days of the week, there are meals that we charge a fee for, and the foundation supports that, over $6,000 a year, so more of those meals can be for free. So they do a lot of good things. We're happy to have them here. So if anybody can support the foundation by coming to the fashion show or wants to donate, you can contact me. Two weeks ago, I was contacted by Channel 5, in a good way, for an interview, which actually, the interview took place yesterday, but I don't know if you heard, Brunswick, Ohio was named by thisoldhouse.com as the eighth-best suburb in the nation for retirees to live.
That's great.
I know. It was excellent. The city's also being interviewed, as well as the senior couple who have retired to Brunswick. But I just wanted to read real quick the criteria that they looked at. It was quality of life, such as crime rate, climate risk, ratio physicians to residents. I'm sure Northeast Ohio did very well there. Financial well-being, including percentage of income spent on insurance and property taxes, state income tax, and more. And also amenities like golf courses, festivals, museums, pickleball options, and more. So I talked a lot about, you know, the different things that we do in the county and in Brunswick, but I also talked about housing affordability, and I talked about our low sales tax. So I tried to put some county things in my interview. We'll see. We'll see how it looks. Yes.
Pickleball's an official.
Yeah, pickleball, yes. Name, by name.
Hey, there's pro teams now.
That's right. Next month, I hope to show a video that was created to promote our office. I showed it at our open house in February, featuring center participants. It's about three minutes long, but I wanted to work with Brian and Rhonda and see if I could show it here. It's really, I think it's really cool. And I will also have first-quarter program numbers. I had a really good meeting last week with county administrators and Shannon about transit and transit costs, and I want to, I'm calculating numbers on not only what we pay locally for transit as Office for Older Adults out of the Human Services Levy, but also on transits on. We don't pay the full transit cost. So on transits on what they are paying, trying to calculate that in, so I can regularly report hopefully on the quarter, this is what, you know, as a county, we're paying for seniors to ride transit.
Good.
So.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioners' resolution, we have resolution recognizing April 2024 as National County Government Month, whereas the nation's 3,069 counties, serving more than 300 million Americans, provide essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. And whereas counties fulfill a vast range of responsibilities and deliver services that touch nearly every aspect of our residents' lives. And whereas Medina County and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, well-being, and safety of our residents in efficient and cost-effective ways. And whereas Medina County and the County Commissioners Association of Ohio encourage our fellow citizens to become engaged and aware in services provided by county governments throughout Ohio. And whereas we appreciate the dedication and hard work of the county workforce who deliver critical services to the people of Medina County. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Medina County, Ohio, that we do hereby proclaim April 2024 as National County Government Month. Move to approve.
Second.
Moved to second. Any comments? I think those of us that have sat here for a while and been involved recognize that the unusual nature of county government, being both certainly serving the local needs, but also, as kind of history has provided too frequently maybe, that when the state has some obligations and services, they look upon the county government to administer those. And many of our departments are actually run, although they are locally employed and they work within the framework of county government, largely they're at the beck and call and providing mandated state services. So we are, if you will, in many ways regarded as the front office of state government as well, as being accessible to the locals. So this recognizes that, and I know often we haven't taken the opportunity, and we do have some education material out there in the office, and I know the CCao, the Commissioners Association of Ohio, has a lot online for those that have an interest when it comes to learning about local government and teaching government to our young students that they understand the nature and the complexity of county government. As we point out, it's just not the Board of Commissioners. We have many of, when we talk about the judges, we have the executive, the other executive functions such as treasurer and auditor. We likewise have law enforcement, the sheriff's department. We have a recorder, as well as a prosecutor. All of them are independently elected, answerable to voters. When it comes to, it's just not about the county commissioners, but it is that entire cadre of elected officials that serve in county functions, which is very important. So anyway, I think, recognizing that, nice to at least have people a little bit more and understand that when we talk about county government, it is sometimes too complex, quite frequently because we're a Board of Commissioners that think we're in charge of everything, where clearly the law doesn't specify that, or that even when we get letters regarding the Park District, there's actually a Board of Commissioners for the Park District, as we've, many have come to learn when they've talked about Chippewa most recently. We're not making the decision. We're Commissioners, but there are other Commissioners that are appointed to do those necessary county functions. So with that, any other comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes. All right, we have also a resolution reappointing members of Medina County Advisory Council on Aging and Disability for the members of Linda Williams, City of Medina, member one, Bill Myers, City of Wadsworth, member number one. Move to approve.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes, and I want to thank them for their continuing volunteer time for our county offices. Open up now for public comment. All right, no comment. We'll just go into discussion session. Actually, Skip, did you want to come up? We do have the letter regarding the emergency shelter operating funds. Do you want to come up and kind of brief us for those in the audience? And I think your letter, as well as your email, kind of explained for our purposes, but the general public need to be aware of what our issue is.
Sure. And I apologize for my typo.
Sorry.
As most people are aware, the county government commissioners and some help from State Representative Sharon Ray and State Senator Mark Romanchuk, enough funding was generated to provide for an emergency housing shelter here in the county, the first of its kind. That $2 million project is underway, will be completed before the end of the calendar year. That facility is ideally located near JFS, Community Action, Veteran Services, the Office for Older Adults, et cetera. To operate a shelter that is open 24/7 and serving people in housing crises requires funds from a variety of sources, local, but also from the state of Ohio, and that's from the Ohio Department of Development. They're the principal funder of emergency housing shelters throughout the state. Their consolidated plan called for a competitive process to apply for funding to do that. Communications with Representative Ray and myself throughout the past year and a half have indicated that funding would be available to Medina County. We learned last Friday that the department is doing a 180 from their consolidated plan and not taking competitive applications for funding. No real reason was given. I find this not only disappointing, but very upsetting in the fact that we've relied on that for a long period of time. Public comments are available, are allowed to be submitted until, I believe, the 11th of April. I've provided you some information so that the commissioners could, if they choose to submit comments to the state of Ohio. I've been in communication with Representative Ray, and we'll do the same with Senator Romanchuk later today, urging them to do the same. State of Ohio does have a nice-sized rainy day fund. They also have other funding sources that probably could make this happen. Every county, as you've heard me say in the past, contiguous to Medina County, has emergency housing shelters, plural oftentimes. And so for us to be able to go through this specific planning process, identify not only the need, but the right location, the right size for a shelter here in our county, again, the first of its kind, I think speaks to how we do things in this county. But then for the state to do a 180 and say, yeah, we're not even going to let you compete, because we usually compete really well in this county, it's just, I think it's wrong. And so I encourage you to consider submitting comments to the state, and happy to help in any way I can.
So literally, they have had this plan in place here, the 2024 consolidated plan. And there had been assurances, I know, talking to Representative Ray and others, that they were assured that there was going to be, if you will, an opportunity for new shelters to come in and make their proposals. And they decided, I guess, just without due regard, or probably without even notifying many people, that they were not going to do this.
Yeah. We learned on Friday.
On Friday. And that's, that's just outrageous. And like you point out, given the revenues in there and the need, it's demonstrated, and we've gone through all the planning hoops that you needed to, and I know you've done a very diligent job keeping in communication with them, as well as other advocates, as well as the legislature, about what our program was, and devoting a lot of these resources, and to have basically the rug pulled out from underneath us at the last minute is just outrageous. There's no doubt.
Yeah, I looked over the materials. I appreciated you putting those, the information together in anticipation of this discussion session and the draft submission, and I completely agree. I mean, this isn't a fly-by-night idea. It's been researched. It's been, the need has been documented time and again. And the benefit, you know, of providing just kind of another point of entry for all these critically important social services, you know, all of that is in jeopardy when the funding source goes away unexpectedly. So I think we've got no choice but to, you know, speak collectively and loudly and let it be known that this is something that, you know, the local governments have been relying on us in particular, and our plans have been predicated on it. So I appreciate you bringing it to our attention, and I'm happy to put my name on the public comment as well.
And to be clear, they're going to continue to fund other ones, they're just not going to fund new ones, correct?
Yes, and they've indicated that doesn't preclude funding new ones in the future, but you've heard that before.
Yes.
Show me, yeah.
But to have a grandfather system on something like this is just wrong.
Yep.
You know, everyone, you know.
Yeah, everyone around us, literally every, Jordan County, we've kind of coming late to the, I won't say the party, but late to being able to bring the resources, I think, in a correct way. And then to be said, look, you're not eligible, is just outrageous. Yeah, it just goes counter to good public policy, frankly.
So we're going to put a letter together?
Yes, if we could, and I think he's given us a good, I think, a good basis for that, and if you're all right with that, we'll put that together. Get that out and make sure that it does get here. We'll have to also include State Representative Melanie Miller on this, since she covers the other part of the county. And I don't take offense to the E in Hambley. There was an immigration official whenever my great, great, great grandfather immigrated here, one section of the family got an E and the other ones didn't, so.
I thought it was funny.
Spell check didn't catch.
No, it's okay. It's okay. There are Hambleys out there with OEs.
That's why I sent it in word in case Rhonda needs to correct anything else.
No, that's fine. No, this is good. This is good. You did a great job putting it together, and I think we really ought to be, and the public can weigh in on this, this is an era, a time of public, and certainly we encourage any of the other housing network entities that have been supportive of this initiative to likewise, if they want to speak up, we encourage that. Hopefully enough pressure will be brought to bear that they'll reconsider the decision and be able to decide that, yeah, okay, there's an opportunity here for the additional funding. At this point, the expected shortfall would be, I know, it's a ballpark, right?
Yeah, that's what I was curious about.
Yeah, about $300,000.
Okay, all right. Okay, and that's obviously, once you get in the door and get the funding, obviously you have continuing plans for that. And we just need to get the foot in the door.
It's almost extraordinary, the timing, just when you start building ours.
Yes, and moving to the professional building.
I know.
Yeah. You're enjoying it there.
Which is a lot of work.
It's a lot closer to downtown. You can come to all the events.
That's true. I do walk to the square when I need to relax for a second.
We've relocated some of your former neighbors there, too, with the veteran services.
Yeah, veteran services.
Oh, yes.
We're trying to make it like.
Well aware. Commissioners, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
But thank you. No, that's appreciated. All right. Chris, do you have anything?
No.
Okay, all right. Matt, anything? Anybody else? Colleen?
I think Matt's working on it. I went to our Sam Wharf Cog this week, and they have given us an initial proposal on a renewal of a five-year lease over there on the square.
Oh, okay.
So I think Matt's going to be handling that for us. And also, we are all set up for the last week of June for all of our judges and all our courtrooms for our hearing loop project.
Super. Good, good. All right.
That came together quickly. The 911 program agreement, I think we did not approve that last week in my absence, and I think we'll have a draft to put in front of the group here, now that it's been submitted, and some of the municipalities are getting it back with approval.
Right.
We have, I think, a 60-day period to take action on it.
Got it.
So we'll probably have that on our agenda in the next week or two.
Okay, all right. I, as I, when I went to, and I mentioned it to Chris, to the CCA board meeting two weeks ago, whatever it was, they brought up, I guess, the state level, the anticipated revenues from those additional fees are nowhere near what the providers had indicated. And so, but still, we have that drop-off of when it's no longer going to apply. So all this windfall of revenue they were talking about did not happen. I think they were counting on number of numbers out there that are no longer active because it applies to devices, and there's a lot of devices out there that are wireless, but they're not paying into having access, and therefore, they were counting on a fee that really didn't materialize.
Yeah, and our February numbers were improved from the initial January numbers.
Right.
But so far, they've looked on an annualized basis, they won't be flat, they will be a little bit increased. There was some concern they might decrease.
Yeah.
Just locally, we had that concern, so. But yeah, it's not, we're not going to be divvying up a lot of extra cash that wasn't there already, so.
And I know the political discussion there was, they limited not only the timeframe, but they said, you're going to have such a windfall, you're not going to know, you're going to be able to spend all this money.
Without the windfall, they were under, literally, they were, even with the windfall, some would argue, underfunding the next gen of 911. Now, they're definitely underfunding that next step.
And there are.
Legislature at this point, I guess, has decided, they're going to still wait and see how the data shakes out before they decide what to do.
There are communities that aren't in as good a shape as we are, because even, even the wireless service is no longer considered next-gen service. And I think there are communities that are behind our progress on that. And now, if they can't, if, if the funding is flat or dropped and they can't, and wireless is no longer an eligible expense, that creates other challenges for those communities.
Yeah.
So, we're fortunate enough to be forward-looking with the, the way we're, we're intending to, to spend those funds for, you know, the, truly the next generation and the evolution of it. But I think some other communities are, are going to be probably bringing those, those issues and need those issues to be addressed legislatively in a way that, I mean, it would benefit us, too, but I think there are going to be a lot more urgent pressing concerns than the ones we have locally.
I know, I know, the CCA staff is monitoring this, they're pushing, obviously, and alarmingly, we're at the mercy of the legislature. So, okay. Anything else?
No.
I did want to announce that, as I understand, Leadership Medina County now will be moving their office over to the, they've got an agreement with the CBB, Convention Visitors Bureau, going to be taking some space in there, which means that there's even less use of the university center facilities, which is, I know that's something you've, you've been working on as well. So, I'm going to continue that conversation, because it is still a much underutilized facility for education purposes.
And I actually think leadership and CBB is a good fit.
Agreed.
For leadership looking for opportunities to get out into the community with CBB activity.
Oh, I, I agree too. And actually, their office function, since COVID, like many organizations, has occurred more outside the office than within. And given the nature of leadership and so forth, there's plenty of places for them to,